So today, our leadoff speaker is Sister Jan Mitchell. And she's gonna come and speak to us. And then Vivian Carter's gonna follow. I heard Kobe Davis is gonna follow. And then Dr. Smart. And then our anchor man is coming. Brother, brother, amen. Brother, brother, Tony Pierce. That's welcome, Jan Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. French. Thank you so much. That's a lot of pressure, you all. Great evening, great evening, great evening. As he stated, my name is Jan Mitchell. And first, I want to stop and thank the Wellness Connection for reaching out to me and asking me to be on this panel with such amazing change agents and leaders. I feel honored and oh, keep soaring in what you're doing. Again, my name is Jan Mitchell. My bio, you heard a little bit about me. I am a mother. I am a widow. I am a caregiver, a business owner, an author, and so wear so many other hats. And I'm glad to be here with some of my colleagues from IU Health that have come out as well, too. And I'm just enthralled. But my session, the most important part, is gonna be for the caregivers. How many caregivers do we have in here? Yes. And we know that being a caregiver is hard. There are some benefits, there are some blessings behind it. But the truth of the matter is, sometimes you feel burnt out. Sometimes you feel worn out. Sometimes you feel consumed by the responsibilities of being a caregiver. And sometimes we don't know how to manage that balance. So I'm gonna talk to you in our session about how to maintain balance, how to yet maintain your life, your sanity, while yet caring for another. And so we're gonna talk about the benefits of caregiving. We're gonna talk about some of the grief you may carry as a caregiver, and how to manage that, and how to take care of yourself while you're helping others. So I look forward to you joining me in that session. For those who are interested in attending, I've got some great information I want to share with you. But I'm also here to hear your voice. Because at the end of the day, your voice is the one that matters. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As discussed, my name is Vivian Carter. I am from the Alzheimer's Association Greater Indiana Chapter. Our chapter serves 73 of Indiana's counties. However, the Alzheimer's Association is nationwide. How many of you, if you have a loved one or know someone living with Alzheimer's or dementia, know where to go get resources? How many of you know someone living with Alzheimer's or dementia? Okay. Well, my session's gonna be a lot about not just the Alzheimer's Association, but also the resources that we provide. Like many of you, I too know someone living with the disease. My great-grandfather passed away of Alzheimer's, and my grandmother is currently living with dementia. Both of their journeys, I like to think, led into the association to living out our mission. And our mission really is to lead the way in accelerating, ending Alzheimer's through accelerating research, risk reduction, early detection, and maximizing quality care and support. I also think it's really important that we all get on the same page about some definitions. One of the questions I get asked most often in the community, Vivian, what is the relationship between Alzheimer's and dementia? And the simple answer is, oh, that's cool. And the simple answer is, Alzheimer's is a form of dementia. It makes up 60 to 80% of cases. And so that is the easiest way that I can say that in really quick terms. If you want to know more, visit me in my session. But there are also other types of dementia as well, which we can talk about that in my session. And so one other thing that I will talk about in my session is also the fact that Alzheimer's is not a normal part of aging. So if you want to hear more about what Alzheimer's is, what it is not, come visit me in my session. There are also certain populations that are at higher risk of Alzheimer's as well. So we can talk about that. We can talk about the importance of risk reduction. As Jan so lovingly mentioned in such a beautiful way, this disease, Alzheimer's and dementia, impacts the entire family. No one is exempt when having a loved one dealing with this disease. And then we also know the 10 signs of Alzheimer's. So even if you don't come to my session, I encourage you to come over and visit me because I have bookmarks which lay out the 10 warning signs of Alzheimer's, which is another question I get a lot in the community. The importance of early detection. I have a lot of people that are scared to talk to me in the community because this is such a fatal disease. But ultimately, please know that if you get an early diagnosis, it really puts you in the driver's seat. You're able to make decisions with your loved ones early on about your life and your care, and you have more of a safe zone. There are treatments out there for Alzheimer's. There is no cure, but there are treatments. And global research is happening around the world to accelerate treatments. We're working really hard to find a cure. We also can talk about science and brain health. I have 10 steps to take care of your brain. Oftentimes, we say what's good for the heart is actually what's good for the brain as well. Sorry, everyone. Our role is so crucial in community. And the reason why our role is really crucial is because we believe in the power of community. Our organization actually started right in someone's kitchen. People got together, they said, "This is an issue. We want to deal with it. We want to fundraise. We want to educate the community." And that's how our organization ultimately got started. We have a 24/7 health line with language translation services in over 200 languages. My colleagues on the health line work day and night. Our health line never shuts off because we know that your needs don't ever shut off. We also have free education and support programs. And we work closely with our partners at AARP to get you connected with resources. Sorry. But there's also ways that you can help us by promoting our health line, talking to your community members, hosting a Purple Sunday with us, just volunteering with us, or even attending our Walk to End Alzheimer's, which this year is September 30th. So we hope that you'll come out and you'll visit us again. Walk to End Alzheimer's is more than just a fundraiser. It's a large community event. And you'll also meet people in the community that are dealing with a lot of the same things that some of your loved ones are dealing with as well. One last service I wanted to talk about and can hear about in our session is our trial match service. You can go on our website, and you can honestly put all your information in, and it will match you to a trial. So if you want to get started, we talked about early detection. There's gonna be more information today about trials. But that's another way that you can get involved as well. And ultimately, our vision of the association is a world without Alzheimer's and dementia. And honestly, we can't do that without community. We can't do that without all of you. And so I hope that you'll join me today. That's the end.
All right. Give yourselves a hand for being here. I am sorry, I do not have a fancy presentation to give you. But I do have some information for you in regards of Prairie Lakes Health Campus, the campus that I belong at. I've been there for eight years. I'm the director of Alzheimer's Facility for Memory Care, dementia residents. And I've been there directing and hosting a host of people, a staff that I have, a full staff. And what we do is take 24/7 care for our residents. Our residents do suffer dementia, all types. The most common type of dementia that we actually service is Alzheimer's. Most of my residents, they have mixed dementia, Alzheimer's as well, and Parkinson's disease and things of that such. And we service these people, but we not only service the residents, we service the families, the families who have dealt with this disease for quite some time. It is confusing. It is challenging to take care of these type of loved ones who suffer this disease. And we are their support. We have a host of different services that we have. One of those services is adult daycare. So we do offer that at our facility. Another service that we offer is an activity. Activities, staff that come to our facility, they're there 10 hours a day, which they keep the people engaged, they keep them active, keep the mind active, and everything to do with keeping them just continuing in their process of staying engaged, keeping their minds stimulated on a daily basis. And so I have the pleasure of speaking with all of you about our services at our memory care. And like I said, this is a support not only for our residents, but it's also for our families. All right? Then thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jerry Smart. I'm a solo practice neurologist right off of 96th and Michigan Road. We're gonna talk to you a little bit today about dementia, some of the treatments for it. At my session, we can go into some more detail, but I'm gonna give everybody just an overview. So the title of my talk is "Sometimers, Old Timers, and Alzheimer's." So what happens is, when people come to see me for memory problems, a lot of people think they have Alzheimer's, but they really have sometimers. So we're gonna talk to you a little bit about what is Alzheimer's and then what's different with sometimers. Now, most people that come to me complaining of memory problems, they usually have sometimers. The Alzheimer's person, if you ask them, "How's your memory?" They say, "My memory's good." And then the family members are sitting in the corner like, "No, it ain't, no, it ain't." So if you come to me asking about memory problems, then usually you have something else going on that's not Alzheimer's. So that's usually one of the first things that I notice when we talk, talk to patients. Okay, so what is dementia? So in just general terms, dementia means memory loss that starts to affect daily living. Memory loss that starts to affect daily living. And when you have that memory loss that starts to affect daily living, then that's can be the beginning signs of Alzheimer's or actually dementia. And there's multiple types of dementia. So usually, it's gonna start with short-term memory. And then later on, the long-term memory goes on as the disease progresses. You can have a decline in intellectual abilities compared to previous levels of function. And then you also have impaired daily function. So maybe they can't dress, they're putting clothes on backwards. Someone's going to the corner to use the restroom instead of the bathroom, getting lost, leaving the stove on. So those are the type of things that we worry about when it starts to get into dementia. And these deficits have to last at least six months. And there can be no other disorders to account for it. So when I tell people what dementia is, because everyone says, "What's the difference between Alzheimer's and dementia?" And you know, like she said, so dementia is a big pie, okay? Now, that big pie, 60 to 80% of that pie will be Alzheimer's. So Alzheimer's is the most common type of dementia, okay? And we look in the picture there, we'll see the other two types of dementia, or vascular dementia, that's from having multiple strokes. So people who have multiple strokes can also start to get dementia. And then there's another dementia called Lewy body dementia, where you get these Lewy bodies that form in the brain. Those patients will tend to have visual hallucinations first, and then they also have some Parkinson's as symptoms. Parkinson's disease, after about eight to 10 years, you can start having Parkinson's dementia. So if you have Parkinson's first, and it's been there about 10 years, and then you have dementia, we call that Parkinson's dementia. If you have hallucinations, a little bit of Parkinson's and dementia early on, then we call that Lewy body dementia. But there's other types of dementia from prion disease, that used to call that mad cow disease from eating brains. Normal pressure hydrocephalus can be a type of, give you a fake type of dementia, but that's just increased water in the brain. Huntington's disease is an inherited disease that can lead to dementia. Alcoholics, that also affects the nervous system and get alcohol dementia. HIV, if it's untreated, can get HIV-related dementia. Nutritional deficiency can cause dementia. And then with all the talk with the NFL and the chronic traumatic encephalopathy, post-concussions, multiple head injuries can also give you a type of dementia. Other types of dementia, names that kind of mimic Alzheimer's a little bit, but can be Pick's disease, there's one called cortical basal degeneration, progressive supernuclear palsy. So there's a lot of different types of dementia. But like I said, if you get that pie, 60 to 80% of that pie is gonna be Alzheimer's. So that's the most common type of dementia. All right, pop quiz. These are some famous people with dementia. Can you yell out some of the names that you see on there? Who's that? Rosa Parks, yes. All right. So if we look at this slide, I'm gonna try to remember these names. It's a cheat sheet there. So yeah, Ronald Reagan. So dementia does not discriminate. So it doesn't matter if you're president, okay? Rosa Parks, you know, doesn't matter if you're a civil rights activist, sitting in the front of the bus when you're not supposed to. Charles Bronson, you know, he was a vigilante, you know, cop on TV, actor. But he had dementia as well. Casey Kasem, you know, used to always do the Top 40 Countdown. So he had Lewy body dementia is where he passed away from. In the middle there, we got Sugar Ray Robinson, you know. Before Ali came, he was, you know, actually, some people still consider him one of the greatest fighters of all time, pound for pound. He was more, you know, more, he wasn't a heavyweight, he was more of a middleweight. And then we got Charlton Heston. Anybody remember Charlton Heston? He played Moses, didn't he? Yeah, so dementia doesn't even care, it'll get Moses, too. So different causes of dementia. So Alzheimer's disease is a degenerative type of dementia. So it's gonna be slow and progressive. And it's gonna be just kind of go down over time, okay? It's not something that's gonna hit you one day, and then, you know, three days later, you know, now you're down here, and it's not gonna, usually doesn't fluctuate. Vascular dementia, like I said, it's from multiple strokes, metabolic causes. So if your B12 level is low, that can give you dementia. If you have hypothyroidism, if your thyroid's underactive, that can give you dementia. Nutritional, so if you're not eating enough foods that have B12 in it, toxic, metabolic, multiple different drugs, multiple drugs that make you sleepy. Infections can cause dementia. There can be structural problems in the brain, brain tumors, lack of blood flow in air and blood vessels, and multiple other causes. Now, when you come see the doctor, you know, one thing we always look at is this thing they call the differential diagnosis. So you come to me, and you say, "I have problems with my memory, Dr. Smart." So my job is to ask you 10,000 questions, okay, to get a good history, and then do a good exam, and to try to figure out, you know, is this Alzheimer's dementia? Is it dementia at all? Or is it not even dementia? So is it old timers? So as we get older, sometimes you do get some hiccups in your memory. But we have to find out, is this Alzheimer's, where it's daily, you know, memory loss that's affecting your daily living? Or is this sometimers? It's not dementia at all, it's just sometimers. So things like delirium can cause dementia. And that's just confusion. So if I get a bladder infection, you know, that can, especially anybody over 65, can get really confused, really weak. We'll see these people end up in the hospital. And then the nurses will tell the family, you know, "This patient has their end-stage dementia." Like, I saw the patient two weeks ago. You know, they were talking, you know, "This is not end-stage dementia. This is delirium." So the UTI caused the person to be more confused. We treat the UTI, the person should get back to the level that they were. So be careful with that. Substance abuse, intoxication, or withdrawal can cause it. Depression is another thing. So depression can decrease your attention and concentration. Anxiety can do the same thing. So a lot of my patients that come in complaining about that, we make sure that we address depression as well. Chronic schizophrenia, sensory, severe sensory handicap, hearing loss. So if somebody's not hearing because they need hearing aids, then of course, they're gonna ask you the same question over and over again, you know. You just, I just told you about that. Well, they didn't hear you, you know. So that's why they keep asking a question over again. So sometimes having people get hearing aids can really help us say, "Oh, this patient didn't have dementia at all. They just couldn't hear. That's why they kept asking you questions." Sleep disturbance. So this is one of my biggest things that we try to emphasize is sleep. You know, they did a study about 20 years ago on the East Coast. They took people who normally slept eight hours a night, and had them do a computer test to get a baseline. And then after one week, they had them, for one week, they had them sleep six hours a night. They went from eight to six for one week. After that one week, they had them come back in and do a computer test. Scores were so bad on that second test, as if they're illegal limit of alcohol. That's gone from eight hours to six hours in one week. So that study was so monumental, they said, "Wait a minute, timer. What about residents in these teaching hospitals? How many mistakes are they making? Are they, you know, are they actually killing people?" So resident, then you have to take a break, okay? Air traffic control is the same thing. I got patients that are air traffic controllers. I try not to ask them any questions because I don't want to know how many near accidents there are on the runways and in the skies. But just know that there are some near accidents on the runways and in the skies. But if they're not getting enough sleep, then, you know, those may not be near accidents, but actually accidents. But sleep apnea, you know, some people have sleep apnea. So the person may look like they're sleeping all night and snoring and keeping you up, your partner up. But when they wake up, they're still tired because their brain is constantly waking them up, saying, "Wake up, take a deep breath, wake up, take a deep breath." So they're gonna wake up and still be tired. So getting a sleep apnea treated can help. Insomnia, so if you're not getting enough sleep, that can also add to attention, memory problems. True story, I had, it was a local businessman. This was a long time ago, so he probably not around anymore. But he owned a company, had two sons. He wanted the sons to take over the company. Of course, they didn't really want to take over the company, so they were planning to sell it. But he started having dementia problems, you know, memory loss started going down, wasn't able to operate his company anymore. Went and seen a bunch of doctors. They said, "Hey, you're just getting older, and it looks like you have Alzheimer's." But it kept getting worse and worse and worse over a matter of about a year and a half. Again, I said dementia or Alzheimer's usually goes a lot slower than that. So we saw him at IU School of Medicine when I was in residency, and asked him some sleep questions, and did a sleep study on him. He had severe sleep apnea. Put him on CPAP, and guess what? Two months later, he was back running the business again. You know, they had already made plans to put him in a nursing home and everything. So we had another, one of my patients thought he had traumatic encephalopathy from multiple concussions, okay? And in the NFL, you know, if you get that, you can actually get NFL disability, which actually pays you pretty good. So he came in, he actually had sleep apnea. And not, you know, he'd had a couple concussions, but it wasn't the CTE that patients get. So sleep is very important. And I want, you know, as the population is getting older, baby boomers are getting older, you know, just remember, there's no such thing as just getting sedentary, okay? Like I said, there can be some old timers in there, but don't let people blame everything on you just getting older, you know. Now, let's look at a couple specimens here. All right, so up top, you'll see a normal brain, okay? So it looks kind of nice, smooth, you got good edges, nice little crease just kind of mostly in the middle, a little bit of grooves. But if you look at an Alzheimer's brain, you'll see it's a little more shrunken, and you see a lot more grooves that you can actually put a pin into. So we definitely see with Alzheimer's, you're gonna get shrinkage of the brain, and then you start to lose brain matter. So you actually see the gyrus a little bit more where you can put your finger down into. And this is a slide, you may not be able to see it from that far. Just up top shows a normal neuron with tau protein and microtubules. So these little tubules that are inside the neuron. And what happens is, once that gets diseased, they start to form these plaques of amyloid, and they start to degenerate. And then that is what causes the shrinkage of the brain and also causes the extra grooves in the brain. So when we talk about what dementia, what causes it, okay? Only about 10 to 15% of dementia actually runs in families, okay? It's only 10 to 15%. And usually, if you have the kind that runs in families, you're gonna get early onset. So in your 50s and early 60s, okay? Other than that, the other 85% of dementia is actually more age-related. So the older you are, you can look at this slide here. Far left, you got 65 to 69. So every five years, your risk for dementia goes up. So once you get to 95 to 99, then it's close to a 40% risk. Anybody here want to be 95, 99? I got a lot of patients say, "I don't ever want to be that old." Okay. So when you come to see me, and we evaluate you after the history and physical exam, sometimes we'll do some formal testing if for some reason I can't figure out what type of dementia you have. There's some laboratory tests that we do. We'll do MRI, just make sure there's no brain tumor or anything. And then there can be some other imaging studies that we do now with some of the newer drugs, looking actually for amyloid to see if this is more of an Alzheimer's type or not with some new amyloid treatments. Now, one of the other things I have people do, and this is something, if you got anybody that has any trouble with memory, is just a draw clock. Now, we cannot use this with the new generation that's come around now because they don't know how to draw clocks. They're not teaching handwriting anymore. Everything is all digital. So if you were born before 1989, then this should work for you. But drawing a clock seems pretty simple, you know? You just draw the circle, put the numbers on the clock, and then you put the hands on the clock to show a particular time. But that actually uses about four or five different parts of the brain and actually checks executive function. So by looking at the clock, we can tell if somebody's in early, you know, if they're in early executive dysfunction or late executive dysfunction. So these are some examples of some different clocks. So on the far left is more of a normal clock. And then in the next two are more, somebody with more moderate dementia. And then more severe dementia at the end where they can't even get the numbers on the clock. All right. The importance of early diagnosis, you'll hear this over and over from multiple people. But treatment, we have to get treatment in. Work issues have to be addressed. Driving, you know, there's a lot of, especially older men. I don't know why that is. They don't want to give up their cars when they start having memory problems. So financial planning, personal planning, this is super, super important. So I encourage everyone, before the person gets incompetent and can't make decisions, you know, have conversations with your loved ones. Get a will made out, get your power of attorney, your medical power of attorney, and your advance directives. Get those in place just so that when everybody's clear. You know, we all have seen those family members that once somebody passes, you know, there's a lot of argument about who's supposed to get the house, who's supposed to get the car, where's all the money at? So that, all that can be prevented with family planning. But do that early on in the mild stages while the person's still competent and not at the end when everyone is racing for emergencies and trying to figure out what nursing home I need to put them into and things like that. But wandering, you'd have a plan for that, and then long-term care. All right, let's talk about three minutes on treatment of dementia, okay? All right, so there are some treatments for dementia. The first treatments we have for dementia were colon esterase inhibitors. So what we found is that in Alzheimer's, inside the brain, you have low levels of acetylcholine, okay? So acetylcholine is, actually works a lot of places in the body. It works in the gut for digestion, it works in the muscles. You know, this man right here knows about muscles. But it also in the brain, it helps with memory, okay? So in Alzheimer's disease, we'll see that the acetylcholine levels are lower. So what they came out with was these medicines that helped to block the enzymes to allow acetylcholine to last longer, okay? So those medicines were Aricep, which is the nepozil, Exelon, rivastigmine, and then Razadiam, which is valentamine. So those will help the acetylcholine last longer. They've been around for a while now. Side effects, usually GI side effects, because like I said, acetylcholine does help with digestion. So diarrhea can be a side effect. Anyone with, and then also can slow the heart. So anybody with heart problems, these would not be, heart rhythm problems as far as a slow heart, right, wouldn't be a good candidate for that. The next section is the NMDA receptor antagonists. These are glutamate regulators. So glutamate is one of the excitatory neurotransmitters in the brain. So the help function, so memantine and the Mende XR. What it does is, it helps you remember more short-term memory. So it works in a different part of the brain. So in the hippocampus, which is right kind of by your ear and temporal lobe, when you hear something or you try to learn something, that has to go through this NMDA receptor, you know, just say 10,000 times, okay? And if it goes through that 10,000 times, then you remember it, okay? You don't have to hear it 10,000 times, but it has to go through, and then it gets stored. If it only goes through 9,000 times, then it doesn't get stored. So the memantine helps to... The mementine helps to, helps that receptor process information faster, so you get that threshold where you can, you can store those memories. And then there's also the combination pill with the napozil and mementine together in one pill called Denteris. Alright, so let's talk about some new treatments, so there hasn't been any new treatments for, for dementia in over 20 years or so, and some of the new treatments that, that we have are actually targeting amyloid, so we know in the Alzheimer's brain, and by the way, there's no cure, okay? So none, there's no cure right now, and the only way to definitively know what type of dementia you have is autopsy, okay? So even some of the world's best dementia specialists may, may get the diagnosis wrong, you know, 10% of the time. So once we look at the brain and chop the brain up, then you can see if there's amyloid there, then it's more, more of a Alzheimer's, if it's more Lewy body, then you'll see Lewy bodies on, on the brain. But we have these amyloid targeting medicines that actually do really good job at decreasing amount of amyloid plaques in the, in the brain, and so there's, there's two of them that have been approved, Asliham came out in July 2021, Lakenby came out in January 2023, and then, the Nanomab, okay? Doesn't have a brand name yet, that's Eli Lilly's that is in trials right now, showing some really good results, it's pending approval. So, good thing is, is, you know, we're definitely seeing some decrease in the amyloid plaques in the brain, so we're kind of excited because this may be one of the first treatments ever to kind of slow the progression of Alzheimer's, but if you look right next to the cartoons there that are saying, hooray, you know, it's Gary Coleman, isn't it? You know, he's saying, what you talking about, Willis? So he's got that famous side eye, everybody ever had seen somebody with a side eye? You've got a side eye or something, you're like, wait a minute, you know? So with these medicines, you know, right now, I'm giving, I'm, I'm giving it a little bit of side eye, I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely, you know, I'm optimistic, but I got to look at them, just a little bit of side eye, we need to know a little bit more information about them and, and, you know, are they, are they really, are they really working? Come to my session and then we'll talk about that a little bit more. Now, a few other medicines, and we're almost done here. There's a medicine for sleep, so a lot of dementia patients don't sleep, they get their days and nights mixed up, so there's one called Belsomar that actually has been studied in Alzheimer's patients and, and is safe, and then there's a, a typical antipsychotic that is also been studied for agitation called Rexulti. Now, most antipsychotics, we try not to use in Alzheimer's patients unless we actually have to, because we have seen an increased risk of mortality and morbidity, so we try not to use those unless it's absolutely necessary. Alright, so the best way to take care of Alzheimer's is to prevent it, right? Alright, so these are some things that we can all do to prevent, so control your vast risk factors, high blood pressure, diabetes, you know, any heart disease, you know, get, get your blood pressure checked and under control. You can do some free radical scavengers like antioxidants, you know, one of the things that, that we know is that a lot of greens, most people, only 2% of people in the United States eat the proper amount of greens and fruits and vegetables every day, but those vegetables are really high in antioxidants, so the Mediterranean diet is one of the most healthiest diets on the planet, so a lot of people are doing that, some people are moving more to a plant-based diet, and those diets don't just help dementia, they actually help heart disease, diabetes, cancer, you name it, it just helps about, about every disease that's out there. Anti-inflammatory agents, H2 blockers like famotidine, Pepsid work pretty, pretty good, statins, prebiotics, probiotics to help with the gut health, exercise, modest amount of alcohol, there's a study recently saying that people don't drink enough and they've seen people who are constipated have higher risk of dementia, people who drink enough water, people who are dehydrated may have a higher risk of dementia, so. Most people I tell, drink about at least four or five bottles of water a day. Education, so we know that the, the higher level of education you have or the more education you, you keep doing on a, on a daily basis, monthly basis, then your risk of dementia is also lower. And then people who do brain exercises, word puzzles actually, actually help. So we definitely need to exercise our brain, you know, so be open to new learnings, connect with people, play stimulating games, have a healthy lifestyle, use your non-dominant hand because that'll make the, your brain work a little bit more to, to establish connections, so if your right hand, try to use your left hand to do more things. Meditate, try to draw something from memory. Alright, so pop quiz again, so, we're checking everybody's memory real quick, so who's in the first picture here on the left? Ronald Reagan, alright, and then in the middle? Rosa Parks, alright, next to her? Alright, and down on the bottom to the left? Alright, and next to him? And then next to... Alright, like I said, Alzheimer's, there's no cure for it right now, doesn't matter if you're president, a civil rights activist, a boxer, and that you can beat everything, a DJ, or even Moses, it does not discriminate, so we all need to do what we need to do to, to prevent Alzheimer's, but also take care of the loved ones that, that do have it. So, got any other questions, you know, you can ask me during my, during the breakout session, and just remember, your brain loves a gym, okay? So just getting, just, even just getting out, exercising, walking is, is all good for the brain, increase blood flow to the brain. Thank you.
We're going to stick with this relay analogy, my job is to get us across the finish line as fast as possible, we're going to stick to that. So thanks for allowing us to be present today, we're certainly in the right place where we're supposed to be. When you got here, you walked past a large mobile research unit, alright, so huge, very modern recreational vehicle, mobile recreational vehicle, that was actually developed during COVID, when we were taking clinical trials to patients in nursing homes that couldn't leave, right? So we had to find a way to still conduct trials and still include people that needed those trials. And so what we've, what we've learned from that is we can actually leverage that capability to, to go through trusted messengers, to communities, to make it convenient for them to learn about and to become involved in if they so choose in clinical trials. So my name is Tony Pearson, I'm just here, proud fan of you all, love Cam, teammate in the back, went to Tennessee State, I can hold that against him. But I, I have what I call the best job at LILY that exists. I, I get a chance every day to make sure that as we're designing trials and we're operationalizing trials, that we ensure that we have adequate representation for multiple dimensions of difference across each of those therapeutic areas. And so what that means particularly here is, and I appreciate the side eye component, because that's, that's something we got to talk about, right? Is that we get a chance to make sure that we have appropriate representation based on prevalence and incidence of black patients in clinical trials. I do this every single day. So I, I, it is, there's no really higher calling than that, it's a public competition, but I can tell you that Eli Lilly and company is extremely committed, right? That my, my boss Denise Johnson serves in the back, this was her second career, right? And so like, she had her normal job and then she was doing this work on the side, was extremely instrumental in advocating to have an entire department function ultimately to be focused on this work, because there's a lot of work to be done. So, out here, I think, I think they may be packed, packed up now, but they'll be here tomorrow as our mobile research team, and we are doing, conducting research on Alzheimer's medication. And so we'll be here tomorrow as well, and we'll be here, I think, from nine to four, so if you, if you're interested in at least learning more, we can, we can have a time for you to sign up as we're, as we're there. But I think the first and most important thing is why, why is Lilly focused on Alzheimer's disease? So I don't need to go into Alzheimer's disease, you got it from Vivian and Dr. Smart, right? About dementia, that pie, vast majority of, of it being Alzheimer's disease. So for us, we're focused on health outcomes, right? When you, that's, that's what drives us, when we talk about prevalence and incidence in a particular community, the impact to a community and disparate health outcomes, how do we make sure that those folks that are living with disproportionate outcomes get into our trials so that we can prove, right, that, that those medications are safe and efficacious in those communities? And across the industry, and really throughout, for, for being candid, there's a significant underrepresentation of us in, in that process of innovation. And so we can think about it as lack, but I, I, I see us as a community of abundance, and so it's really, can we empower you with information so you can make a decision about whether or not participating in a clinical trial and being a part of that innovation is for you, so that when, in some distant future when medications come to market, that you, that we're confident that they would be safe and effective in us, right? That's like, that's the core component of this. And so we know that many social processes that influence disparities in, in development of Alzheimer's can influence whether and when that diagnosis occurs, right? So with, with us typically, there's a much later diagnosis, and so those, those social determinants, drivers of health that contribute to, to those gaps in care that we know we're really, really hazardous in many instances, right? So we have to make sure that we're driving those. Misdeivins and delayed diagnoses for Alzheimer's or other dementias are more common among older adults in certain racial and ethnic groups than among our Caucasian and, and those of the Europeans, and however someone should pretend to buy those categories. So we, we're seeing it with, with us at a higher rate that we're not necessarily participating in or even being diagnosed as early as we need to, so there's, so that, in my mind, that's a red that you run to, right? If you're, if you're metric and you're measuring it success, you're like, that's something we've got to overcome. In the US, non-Hispanic, Black and Hispanic older adults are disproportionately, disproportionately more likely than white older adults to have Alzheimer's disease, to the tune of 19% of Black, Black people and 14% of Hispanic adults living age 65 and older have Alzheimer's disease compared with about 10% of white older adults, right? So again, we're, we're, our focus, because I know, let's, let's speak to it, right? I work for a global pharmaceutical company, right? And so there's this thing, well, well, why are you here, right? Aren't, are you trying to sell us something, some nefarious plot? And we're like, on this side of the organization, when you look at the data, this is what it tells us, that's the piece we need to go to, right? That's that sheet, right? We got to go get that and bring it back. And so that's what we're focused on. So our goal, people like Cam, Cam is actually on, on the team, he's focused in neurodegeneration and pain, like that's what he does every day is to, as, as we're designing trials and we're deploying trials, making sure that those teams are doing that in a culturally competent, culturally humble way to make sure we're minimizing gaps to participate, as many gaps to participation as possible for people who look like us, right? Like that's, that's his sole role every day. He does that for other races and ethnicities and other demographics too, but he certainly makes sure that, that we're focused here. For us, we're focused in, in, from a clinical trial perspective, in three areas. First, we're focused on increasing access for underrepresented communities, we are without a doubt underrepresented, we're not asked to participate, physicians unnecessarily, unless you're very intentional, like, like Dr. Smart, they may not have a clinical trial in mind for you based on what your, what your sort of records are showing, we, we owe you more, as a, as a part of that medical contingent, we owe us more, right? To be thoughtful about where, where and whether or not trial would be appropriate for you. So we want to break down that barrier, what we call that is diversity by design. So we're not designing trials, operationalizing trials and realizing, oh wait, we're really underperforming with respect to the Black community, let's go back and try to fix it, that, that's, that's a hard thing to do, we do it, but it's a hard thing to do, rather than doing it at the outset and saying, everybody become committed to this, here are the tactics we're going to deploy, here's how we're going to empower this community to make sure we have the representation that we would like and that that community deserves in the process of developing innovation, it's the first piece. The second piece is we respect to investigators, and so I think the numbers are, at least in the Black community, 5.6% of physicians are, are, are Black and even fewer clinical trials. But we have a very firm commitment to maximizing that number because of the outsized role that physicians like Dr. Smart play and community trusted voices, when they show up, we listen, and you're supposed to listen, we're supposed to listen because he's giving counsel, he's not selling anything, he's not promoting, he's actually very balanced in his approach, and we care, right? We all care about hearing from folks that have that balance and getting perspective to help us make better decisions. So we're very committed to, to surfacing diverse investigators and having them to join our trials so that their voice can be heard, even bringing them to the point of being in leadership roles to design our trials. And when I say that, it's not just focused on the diversity plan, it's focused on designing the entire trial, because if you can get it right for us, then you can get it right for other folks as well, so we need to be in those leadership roles and we need to be writing the papers about the results right in those spaces, so we want to surface that. But we also know that we're not going to be able, even, even the literature is very clear, that better outcomes, staying enrolled in the clinical trial, or working with someone that looks like you is, is, is something that's a driver, but we know with that small number that we can't do it just with physicians that look like us or nursing staffs that look like us. So we've got to also tap into, I won't say majority, because that's not, that's not an appropriate term, physicians that don't look like the patient population they serve, we've got to tap into those folks and unlock them as well to, to help them tap into respective communities, so that's cultural competence and sensitivity training, we've got to help them so they can reach the patients that, that need it, so need to be involved somewhere, right? The third piece is, is really what we're doing today, and so we've got to be in a place where we're really working with and through trusted partners to be invited in, right? So I, you can, so I've heard my resume, like I'm, I'm, I'm literally from, born in Jacksonville, Florida, grew up in Daytona Beach, grandmother is a nurse, mother's an educator, just retired after 38 years of public education, like dad stayed from retirement, I have folks that accorded to me like you, right? And that say, here's the thing you're going to go do with the talent that you have, which is to be here, but quite candidly, I'm here in Indianapolis, I've been here for 16 years, you may not know me, but you know Dr. French, you know Trevor Shope, right? And so what we know is that they're not going to let us come in here if we don't pass a certain limit, right? If we don't pass it, we don't get invited, and we shouldn't be invited. So it's, it does no good for me to roll up here with just a mobile research unit and say, hey, look at us, we're here, walk right by us, and you should, why are you here? Who are you? Right? Even though you know, you may know Lilly, it's who invited you. And so we got, we have to be invited, and we continue to be here, and I think the durability of those relationships engender trust, for me, trust is more of a, of a journey, it's not a destination, because you can lose it anytime, but our consistency of being present is really what builds that. And so we're in the space, like I said when I started, we're in the place we're supposed to be, and shame on us if we're not still here wherever the wellness connection goes, right? We need to be in those spaces so that you, again, get more familiar, so at one point in time, you can decide whether or not clinical trial for this patient is for you. For some people, it may be tomorrow, you're like, yep, I want to do it, for some people, that may be 10 years from now, right? Whatever that is, we need to be in the space so you can be familiar with us, you can make that decision for yourself, right? That's, that's the focus. So we, we, we focus in those three areas, we're focused on grass tops, so that, that's, that's like Congress and Senate and legislators and large organizations and associations, but we also focus in grassroots, right? The people, again, I think the value of us is our community, and community changes things, right? So if we're looking at numbers of core or a lack of enrollment for underrepresented communities, for the Black community specifically, it's within through the community that's going to change. And so we're committed to doing that, again, we've got an entire function that's dedicated to it, I carry a healthy degree of skepticism about most things, and so when I had my first leadership team meeting, my boss and senior vice president were talking about clinical trial diversity, and I'm like, do you want someone that just, their resume looks nice and can articulate a little bit, or are you really trying to get something done? And the first thing that she said to, to her leadership team was, we're not going to achieve meaningless metrics. Good enough for me, game on, because I can't, I can't do anything else, right? I'm a truth teller, I do not lie, I will not lie, I cannot lie, I will tell the truth. And so the truth is that Lilly is committed, we've got plenty of work to do, it's clear from our data that we've got plenty of work to do, but we're, we're, we're very invested and we're committed to doing it, which is why we're here, which is why we'll continue to be here as long as we're, we're invited, doing everything we can to provide support. So in our session, I think we're going to partner with Vivian and be able to sort of answer questions that you may have, certainly there's a whole host of knowledge in here, but if there's answers or questions you have about the clinical trial process, what that is, we'll, we'll try to demystify that for you, just to make you, again, a little more comfortable, and then, again, all of this is about not convincing you to do something, but empower you with information so you can make the best decision for yourselves. With that, I think we're across the finish line. Thank you.